All right. Good evening. This sixty-sixth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. In lieu of tonight's invocation, we'll hold a moment of silence and following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Scheifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Middleton's not here. Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello.
Pinkett and Middleton are here. Well, Pinkett is here in two seconds.
Cohen, Dorsey, Scheifer, Henry, McCray, Reisinger, Costello, Burnett, Bullock, Stokes, Clark, Sneed. Mr. President, we have a call.
We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the August nineteenth, twenty nineteen proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to four of the agenda. Executive nominations.
EA nineteen dash zero two four five Sabrina Johnson Turner, Member, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District eleven.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two four six Julian Aldebran, Member, Civilian Review Board, District twelve.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two four seven Tiara M. Hawks, Member of Civilian Review Board, District three.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two four eight Natalie Novak, Member, Civilian Review Board, District five.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two four nine Wendy L. Blair, Member, Planning Commission, District fourteen.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three three City Streets Opening Air Rights Over a Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of the Two Hundred Block of North Broadway for the purpose of condemning and opening the air rights area over a portion of the public right-of-way on the two hundred block of North Broadway as shown on plat three zero six dash A dash twenty-three in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three four City Streets Closing Air Rights Over a Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of the Two Hundred Block of North Broadway for the purpose of condemning and closing the air rights area over a portion of the public right-of-way of the two hundred block of North Broadway as shown on plat three zero six dash A dash twenty-three A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three five Sale of Property Air Rights Over a Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of the Two Hundred Block of North Broadway for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in the air rights area over a portion of the public right-of-way of the two hundred block of North Broadway and no longer need it for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three six City Streets Closing Three Ten-Foot Alley's for the purpose of condemning and closing a ten-foot alley extending from the west side of Delaware Avenue southwestwardly, one hundred and twenty-eight point five feet more or less, a ten-foot alley extending from the northwest side of Virginia Avenue northwestwardly, three hundred ninety-five feet more or less, to the southeast side of Woodland Avenue, and three, a ten-foot alley extending from the west side of Delaware Avenue southwesterly, one hundred ninety-eight point five feet more or less, and shown on plat two ninety-eight dash A dash nineteen A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three seven City Streets Opening North Durham Street for the purpose of condemning and opening North Durham Street extending from East Eager Street northerly, four hundred thirty-three feet more or less, to the south side of East Chase Street as shown on plat three four one dash A dash forty-five in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three eight City Streets Closing North Durham Street and a sixteen-foot alley for the purpose of condemning and closing North Durham Street extending from East Eager Street northerly, four hundred thirty-three feet more or less, to the south side of East Chase Street and a sixteen-foot alley extending from the west side of North Durham Street, one hundred thirty-six point eight feet more or less, to the west side of North Wolf Street as shown on plat three four one dash A dash forty-five A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three nine Franchise Installation of Three Private Water Pipes in the Bed of the One Thousand Block of McCullough Street for the purpose of granting a franchise to the housing authority of Baltimore City to construct, use, and maintain three private underground pipelines in the bed of the One Thousand Block of McCullough Street between West Hoffman Street and West Preston Street, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four zero Acquisition of Property Temporary Construction Easements and Permanent Easements for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to acquire by purchase or condemnation the fee simple or other interests as the Director of Transportation may deem necessary in portions of a descriptive property on the south side of Water View Avenue, rear of twenty-two hundred dash twenty-two hundred to twenty-two oh eight Round Road, and known as Ward twenty-five, Section five, Block seven six one zero, Lot nineteen, as shown on plat RW two zero dash three six four one zero, dated November eighth, twenty sixteen, in the office of the Director of Transportation and needed for the Seaman Avenue Storm Drain Project, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four one Charter Amendment Charter Review Commission for the purpose of requiring a charter review commission to be appointed at least once every ten years to review and make recommendations for necessary deletions, additions, and revisions to the city charter, providing for the term of the commission, setting forth the manner of the commission's appointment, providing for the commission's duties, requiring that the commission be dissolved on the completion of its duties, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Stokes.
Thank you. Please note that Councilman Costello is a co-sponsor. Thank you, and thank you colleagues for my co-sponsors. As you guys know, it's a part of my, please add Councilman Scheifer as a co-sponsor as well, and Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, Councilwoman Sneed, thank you. Thank you all for your co-sponsorship. We know in my legislative policy agenda, this, one of the big portions of that is cleaning up and reshaping and transforming and professionalizing city government. Having a city charter reviewed periodically is a standard practice across the country in major cities. I actually started off my first big town hall asking our colleague Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark in a room full of people from Waverly in northeast Baltimore, when's the last time the city council's, the city's charter has significantly seen change? And our colleague said it was before she got here. And while we understand that was just yesterday for us, that was a long time ago for some. And we have to, if we want Baltimore City to truly evolve, we have to be sure that we're making sure that our government, our government structure is modernized and is for the world that we live in today, and not for the world of decades past. So I look forward to having a discussion about this. Again, this is best practice around the country. When we talk to our colleagues in other cities, they have fully reviewed their charter and changed it five and ten times over before we have done it once. So thank you for your co-sponsorship. This has been assigned to the Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four two Legislation Equity Assessment and Fiscal Note Requirement for the purpose of requiring the certain legislation be accompanied by an equity assessment and fiscal note prior to being voted on by the, by a legislative committee, establishing that the Office of Council Services prepare the required equity assessment and fiscal notes, defining certain terms, providing for the time for submission of the equity assessment and fiscal note, providing for the content of a fiscal note, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Pinkett, Bullock, Reisinger, Stokes.
Please add Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Scheifer as co-sponsors. Thank you, and thank you colleagues for your co-sponsorship. Listen, when we here in the city council, we are placing a huge amount of responsibility, not just to improve how our city government operates and for the safety of our citizens and the education of our citizens, but also fiscal responsibility. Please add Councilman Costello as a co-sponsor as well. And I think that when we understand that most legislative bodies, including the General Assembly, and most city councils across the country require for each individual piece of legislation to have a fiscal analysis, I think it's something that's long overdue for the city of Baltimore. Nothing against us and how we've operated in the past, but if we're truly going to be true shepherds of citizens' taxpayer dollars, we have to know the impact of what we're proposing and how that's going to impact how that money is being spent. Similarly, we know that we're going to operate henceforth and forever in the city of Baltimore through a lens of equity, through legislation that we pass here in this body. So likewise, it is very important that we understand how the pieces of legislation that we're putting forth are going to be looked at through a lens of equity. So requiring this, I think, these two together shows that we're serious both about being fiscally responsible with taxpayers' dollars, but also we are very serious about implementing equity in our work. We're not just demanding it of the agencies, but demanding it of ourselves, and we will have these assessments before we move forward with any legislation. This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. Thank you.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four three Gun Offender Registration Additional Violations for the purpose of amending the definition of gun offender to add certain criminal violations for which a conviction would require an individual to register with the Baltimore City Police Commissioner and conforming, correcting, and clarifying related provisions. Sponsors President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Henry, Bullock, Reisinger, Stokes.
Please add Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Costello, Councilman Scheifer, Councilman Dorsey as co-sponsors. Thank you again, colleagues. Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. We understand Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you, Councilman. We often hear, we know that violent crime in Baltimore is driven by gun violence, and we have a gun offender registry, and we also know from the data that has been presented to us over the past few years from the police department that many and most of the weapons that are used in the commencement of crimes on the streets of Baltimore are coming from outside of the city. And we know if you look at places like east and west Baltimore that are transportation deserts, people that live in those neighborhoods oftentimes have never been to the other side of town, let alone to west Virginia or Pennsylvania or Florida or Texas, and be able to bring a gun from that location and use it in a crime on the streets of Baltimore. So today, what this legislation does is it adds into our gun offender registry people who are straw purchasing and gun trafficking guns into Baltimore City, those who are illegal users of assault weapons that we know are responsible for violence on our streets, and also those who are responsible for the sale of guns of minors. Adding these people to the list so that we're focusing in on the people that are providing the supply for which is leading to our children being shot on our streets, to people being robbed on our streets of Baltimore, people losing their lives each and every day, now two hundred and forty, who has lost their lives in the city of Baltimore. This is what we have to do in order to be serious and make sure that everyone is complying with gun offender registry in Baltimore, and we can show as a council that we are serious about making sure that everyone knows who these people are and holding them accountable. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four 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 Complete Streets Extended Deadlines Modified Effective Date for the purpose of extending various deadlines for the development and adoption of a community engagement plan and a complete streets manual, clarifying certain standards for the community engagement plan, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related language, providing for a modified special effective date for City Code Article twenty-six, subtitle forty, Complete Streets, as enacted by ordinance eighteen dash zero one nine seven, and providing for a special effective date for this ordinance. Sponsors Dorsey, Cohen, Henry, Pinkett, Bullock.
Please add Council President Scott, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman Pat Clark as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. The Department of Transportation was given a mandate to create a complete streets manual for the city, as well as a requirement to conduct certain related community engagement, much of which is guided by the principles and spirit of the council president's equity law and the pursuits related to it. That manual had, was given a series of deadlines for its creation, the first of which is coming up on October third, and the department has come nowhere close to being able to deliver that draft manual on October third, and have not conducted any of the required community The transportation environment in the city makes up a third of the available land space. That's, that's going to have a huge impact on the lives and outcomes in neighborhoods all around the city if we're making a policy that's related to how it is shaped and who it is designed to serve and who it is designed not to serve. And for that reason, the community engagement work related to rolling out the paradigm shift that complete streets represents is really of great importance to the city, and people really deserve an opportunity to better understand the subject. And so we need to give the Department of Transportation more time to roll out an equitable community engagement plan and to deliver the complete streets manual that they're required to. The Transportation Committee held a hearing that helped us to better understand the needs of the department, so we're working with them, and I personally can say I'm optimistic with Director Sharkey and the way I see the department going. So I'm, I'm very hopeful that if we give them this opportunity to do the work and extend these deadlines, that it'll actually get done this time. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. This has been assigned to the Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four five Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to-
Stop for one second. Please add Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Burnett to co-sponsors of nineteen oh four four four.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four five Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to two unit, to two dwelling units in the R seven zoning district, eight seventeen Chauncey Avenue for the purpose of, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R seven zoning district on the property known as eight seventeen Chauncey Avenue as outlined in red on the occupying plat, accompanying plat. Sponsors Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four six Banning Certain Pre-Employment Drug Screening for the purpose of banning pre-employment drug screening tests for tetrahydrocanan, no, for employment with the city of Baltimore with certain exceptions and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Sneed, Dorsey, Henry, Burnett, Bullock.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
As Councilwoman for the thirteenth district of Baltimore City, I represent neighborhoods that have been devastated by the laws that are on the books right now, and so some of the laws need to be repelled and replaced. Right now Senator Ferguson is working on bills soon to be former laws regarding the possession, sale, and distribution of marijuana that has led to hundreds of thousands of marioners having records of arrests, incarcerations. Their arrests and convictions have incarcerated, have disproportionately impacted black and brown communities, and are accompanied with a stigma that weighs heavily on hundreds of thousands of marioners. The convictions have placed stumbling blocks in front of them from obtaining everything for employment and housing. I'm asking for support on this bill because this affects the people that live in our community. Every day if someone is tested and has a drink after work, an alcoholic beverage, and they go to test the next day, it doesn't show up that they had a drink. But if they have marijuana over the weekend and go to a job interview on Monday and to test it, they are denied a job for Baltimore City. And I'm not saying that, listen, they should be operating heavy equipment or anything like that, but I do say jobs entry level, typing, working on computers, cleaning, sweeping, those jobs should not hold somebody back just because they have marijuana in their system from getting a job. And if we think about it, there is right now on the books ten thousand people who have assigned medical marijuana patients. Maryland-wide, a hundred thousand patients have been assigned medical marijuana or considered medical marijuana patients. If any of those people apply for a job within Baltimore City, they will be denied access to having a job. And so I think this is a way that we're thinking about marijuana differently. I hope that our senators and delegates in Annapolis also push this and try to clean this up so that people in my community and across Baltimore City will have access to jobs in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four seven Urban Renewal Hampden Business Area Amendment for the purpose of amending, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Hampden Business Area to conform certain provisions and references to those of Article thirty-two dash zoning, to modify the duration of the plan, to revise certain exhibits of the plan, to conform to the references to the land use and the zoning district classifications of the zoning code that is now in effect, and to conform and correct certain language in the plan, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Clark, Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
On behalf of us both, my seventh district colleague and myself, this is a, this is a minor amendment to the Hampden Urban Renewal Plan. It simply gives us a new, like, ten years of existence of this urban renewal plan, plus it brings it really up into conformance with transformed zoning, so it reflects the same principles and requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one six three R Informational Hearing Closing Means Close Clarifying Three-One-One Services Approach to Resolving Requests for the purpose of inviting representatives from Three-One-One Services, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Department of Recreation and Parks, BGE, and the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation to appear before the city council to discuss the effectiveness of Three-One-One resolving complaints and referring tasks to other agencies. Sponsors Pinkett, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Stokes.
Please add Council President Scott as a co-sponsor, Councilman Scheifer as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Three-One-One system in theory provides a powerful tool for constituents and government to work collaboratively in the resolution of a host of civic issues, but this system is only as effective as the management and oversight of the data entered into the system. Presently, our residents are utilizing the Three-One-One system at an overwhelming rate, but unfortunately, too often, we as city government are falling short in properly addressing these concerns in a timely manner and to completion. Of particular note is the closing of issues. Far too often, concerns that are submitted into Three-One-One are listed as closed when that is far from the case. In reality, the matter has not been abated at best, it has only been referred to another responsible agency. And this ambiguity in what is considered closed is threatening, threatening the integrity of the Three-One-One system. Our citizens deserve better. We need to once and for all fix Three-One-One. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your leadership on this very important issue. Please add Councilwoman Clark as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Sneed as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to, Councilman Costello as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one six four R City Government Customer Service Centers for the purpose of recommending the creation of city government customer service centers. Sponsors Henry, Cohen, Dorsey, Burnett, Bullock, Stokes, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry. Please add Councilman Scott, Council President Scott as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, we're having a small.
Snape, fool.
At some point in the past week, we must have decided that we needed to move that can. Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues. We talked a little bit about this at lunch today. Several other cities around the country have what they call little city halls scattered throughout their municipality. Here, we might think of it less as little city halls and more as little municipal buildings because what they allow is they allow people the opportunity to pay bills to the city, apply for permits, receive information about city services, but rather than having to come downtown to the sort of central government complex where the parking rates are the highest and it's sometimes, especially on days like today, very difficult to get here and get away, they, they place these facilities on commercial corridors throughout the city maximizing the access of the citizens to their government. And I think that that sounds like a great idea. I think if we can make government more accessible to the populace, I think we'll have more interaction, more engagement, and that would be a good thing. So I thank my co-sponsors for their support. I look forward to this hearing, and I look forward to working, Mr. President, with your office and with the mayor's office to see how we could get facilities like this put into next year's budget so that we can, as Councilman Pinkett said during this year's budget hearings, you know, open up parts of the city that right now don't have the same access to city facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Please add Councilwoman Sneed as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the hearing.
All those in favor of short titles say aye. Those opposed say nay. Thank you. Consent Calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar is approved. Committee reports. We will now move to bills on second reader. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero eight Amending Ordinance fifteen dash four two eight Franchise Crown Castle NG Atlantic Fiber LLC.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. There are technical amendments on your desks. I move the amendments favorable.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye. All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three seven one Zoning Conditional Use Banquet Hall, forty-three thirty-nine York Road, a portion of the property known as forty-three thirty-five to forty-three thirty-nine York Road.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding and facts on this bill.
Thank you. Without objection, the findings and facts will be adopted. The findings and facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments. On my colleagues' desk, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero two Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lots, Hohen Lithograph Building.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding and facts.
Without objection, the findings and fact will be adopted. The findings and fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments. On my colleagues' desk, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Please note, Councilman Dorsey, as I know, the motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four two zero Zoning Signage Variances, fourteen eleven Warner Street and three oh one Stockholm Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move- Mr. President, I move the finding and facts.
Without objection, the findings and facts will be adopted. The findings and facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments still on my colleagues' desk. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President, I, Mr., I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0304, property tax credit, 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray. Hold on one second, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing for this bill on August 22, 2019. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments are on council members' desks. I move the committee amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye. All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0390, rezoning, 1617 Broning Highway. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schaefer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Dorsey abstains. This bill is approved. And Councilwoman Middleton is absent. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0397, repeal of ordinance 03 dash 613, University of Maryland Bio Park Plan Unit Development. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schaefer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Costello abstains. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0398, Urban Renewal Popleton Amendment. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schaefer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Costello abstains. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0399, rezoning, 755, 757, 759, 761, and 763 West Fayette Street, 760 West Baltimore Street, Block 0626, Lot 053, north, and a portion of the former bed of West Fairmont Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schaefer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Costello abstains. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0400, zoning conditional use parking lot, 301 East Lumbar Street, AKA 300 East Pratt Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schaefer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Dorsey, as a no, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0411, city property renaming Fairmont-Hofford Building to Lake Clifton Park Building. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schaefer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock. Councilman Stokes, Dunbar grads go last.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be hearing Bill Number 19 0406, September 24, 2019, at 2:00 p.m., and that is Franchise Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. That's at 2 o'clock. And the committee will also be hearing City Council Bill 19 0407 at 2:05 p.m., and that is Franchise New Singular Wireless PCS. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19 dash 0413 on October 23 at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is the Plan Unit Development Amendment 2 at White Hall Cotton Mill. Mr. President, a move for suspension of rules 10 dash 3.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended.
Move.
Yes, sir.
The Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19 dash 0430 on October 23 at 1:05 p.m. This is the repeal of ordinance 16 dash 580 located at Northwood Commons Plan Unit Development. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, September 26 at 2:00 p.m. This is for Council Resolution 17 dash 0003R, Quarterly Budget Briefings. This will be fourth quarter of fiscal year 2019, along with closeout for the entire year. The Budget Committee also that day at 2:15 p.m. will hold a hearing on Council Resolution 17 dash 0004R, and that's Budget Oversight Hearing for Baltimore City Public Schools. That will be fiscal year 2019, quarter four, and closeout. And the Judiciary Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, September 17 at 10:00 a.m. on Council Bill 19 dash 0412, city property renaming Engine 52 Fire Station to Hilton L. Roberts Senior Fire Station at the request of Councilman Pinkett. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Schaefer.
The Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on Monday, September 16 for Bill Number 19 dash 0409, Transparency and Oversight in Claims and Litigations. This will be a televised hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Asked for a suspension of the rules to announce a hearing for Bill 19 dash 0444.
Without, without any objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Call a hearing this Wednesday for the Transportation Committee at 3:05 p.m. in council chambers, September 11 for Bill 19 0444, Complete Streets Extended Deadlines Modified Effective Date.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee has two hearings. Bill Number 1 dash 0320, Thursday, October 3, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. within council chambers. That's going to be Passenger for Higher Services Tax Corrective. And the second hearing, 19 dash 0389, at 10:05, the same day, Thursday, October 3, 2019, in council chambers for High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Eligibility for Tax Credit.
Thank you. Chair recognizes, last but certainly not least, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you did that because Murvo finally beat Dunbar or something. The Executive Performance Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, September 18, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. to review the following nominations for the Civilian Review Board, Julian Aldabon, Tierra M. Hawks, Natalie Novak. Also, the Executive Performance Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, September 25 at 10:00 a.m. to review the following nominations, the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals, Sabrina Johnson Turner, and Wendy L. Blair. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular announcements. Before we go any further, I would first just like to thank all the men and women from the city services, from police and fire to emergency management, everyone from DOT and even Public Works who helped deal with the situation downtown today. They moved in a quick and swift action to make sure that people were safe and that we were able to get people in and out of downtown in a safe way. We know it's a huge inconvenience, but in today's world, we have to make sure that we can be safe at all costs. And we understand, especially with the president and others coming to town this week, that we really understand that we have a heightened level of sense of even responsibility beyond normal because we know that these kind of events can attract things. So just wanted to appreciate all of the women and men that worked for the city that did a great job today of trying to make sure that we were keeping everyone safe. Also, for regular announcements, this past weekend, we had the first annual Football Kickoff Classic for Baltimore City. We had great games where Lake Clifton was able to defeat Carver, Votech High School. City College was able to defeat Patterson High School in the primetime game, the Battle for City Supremacy. The Murvo Mustang once again were victorious over Dunbar High School. But the most important thing about this event was that there was over 3,000 tickets sold. Poly Stadium was sold out, and even people came to watch from sitting on the hill at Poly Weston High School because they wanted to see our young people play so much. And the incident, the event went off without major incident. We were able to have our young people out and able to have them in a safe environment, and it showcases what our young people can do, not only on the field, but also what they mean to each other and how we have to provide these opportunities to showcase them because our athletes and our student athletes are some of the brightest, and our brightest stars, but that also their colleagues want to see them play, and they want to see them play in a big, in a big way. So I look forward to having this event each and every year, and I look forward to a great high school football season. Councilwoman McCray, Poly is next on the beat-down list for Murvo High School, so I'll see you on Friday. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, there was a time when I would have expected that you would have said that the most important thing was that Murvo beat Dunbar. So I, I, I thank you for, for looking to what is the more important thing for the city as a whole. I rise with just a brief congratulations to my colleagues who were elected in November of 2016 because, as of last Wednesday, you have been in office for 1,000 days. I know that it doesn't feel quite like that. For some of you, it feels longer. For some of you, it feels shorter. But feel, feel free to stop into my office anytime because I keep it on the whiteboard what day we're on, and more importantly, how many days we have left. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to provide a quick update on the situation in downtown. With public safety at the forefront, the precautionary sweeps executed by law enforcement are now complete. The evacuation notice has been lifted. All buildings and streets in the area, except the garage at 100 East Pratt Street, are open. The suspicious vehicle in question is not a threat and is in the process of being removed from the garage. An update will come once the 100 East Pratt Street Garage is reopened. Also, wanted to share about an event that Councilman Pinkett and I are holding, or hosting on Saturday, the 7/11 Druid Heights Cleanup. I represent the southern half of the neighborhood. Councilman Pinkett represents the northern half. I'm very grateful to have such a strong partner and friend helping me in representing that neighborhood. This year, we're expecting, this is the fifth year of the event. Mr. President, you've been there before in the past. This year, we're hoping to have in excess of 500 volunteers out in the neighborhood. We have a number of organizations that have partnered with us this year, and we're very grateful for that support. It's going to be raining all day on Thursday, Friday, Sunday, and Monday, but Saturday it's going to be sunny out, so please join us in Druid Heights. The cleanup will be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Anyone watching at home, it'll, will be kicking off from the Druid Heights Community Development Corporation, which is located at 2140 McCullough Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Want to talk about some things happening in arts and culture. This Friday at 6:00 p.m. is the 40th anniversary in the 11th District of the School 33 Arts Center. There is a group show, group exhibition art opening there on Light Street at 6:00 p.m. At 8:00 p.m., an entity known to, I'd say, a fair number of us, Easy Jackson, will headline a show at the Baltimore Soundstage. So you've got a couple options, or you could just do one and then the other, and there's probably some other things happening that evening you can squeeze in there if you want. A, on Saturday, September 21, the next Charm City Night Market is happening. I believe this is also in the 11th District. So this is a really cool cultural event that's been happening for the last year or so that I really enjoyed, I have enjoyed the last ones, so I encourage people to show up for that. A recent article from the Baltimore Fish Bowl, I thought this was great. 17 Theater Shows to See in September. Baltimore has enough theater happening in it that there are 17 shows to see just in the month of September. From The Theater Project, The Arena Players, Center Stage, Fells Point Corner Theater, Iron Crow, Everyman, Vagabond Players, Strand Theater in the 3rd District, Spotlighters, Single Carrot, Limitless Exposure Talent, a joint venture of Coppin State and McDaniel College, Cohesion Theater, and On the Road, and even at the Hippodrome. There are that many organizations producing theater in Baltimore City. Go out and see some of it. Chesapeake Shakespeare, I didn't even see that that wasn't even on the, they didn't make the list, Phil, I'm sorry. And lastly, I just want to congratulate a couple of artists. Latoya Hobbs had an exhibition here at City Hall not too long ago. Really, really amazing work, combination of painting and carving. She's just such an amazing artist. And Joe Giordano, who's been taking photographs here in Baltimore for so many years, have just been awarded the Municipal Art Society of Baltimore's Travel Prizes for 2019. The Municipal Artists, Art Society of Baltimore will award each of them $6,000 to travel in pursuit of their art. Do a little Google search about that and learn what they proposed to do with that money and where they're going to be traveling and what the Municipal Art Society of Baltimore is helping support Baltimore artists in doing. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to them. Last, I'd like to ask Councilman Rosenger to honor a moment of silence for the 240 homicide victims that we had. Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to reiterate the fact, the collaborative effort between myself and Councilman Costello on the 5th Annual, I don't want to stress 5th. Oftentimes, people think that we're just doing something in response, but this is something that he and I have been doing for, going on five years now, and we will continue to do, and excited about the number of volunteers that are coming from around the region to help support the effort. And then lastly, to stay on the sports theme, also this weekend at Kipp Academy, which is housed at the former Wallbrook High School, the Wallbrook Alumni Association held an alumni basketball game between the Wallbrook Warriors and the Dunbar Poets. In a thrilling, exciting game, the Wallbrook Warriors prevailed 46 to 44 over the Dunbar Poets, giving Councilman Robert Stokes his second L. for the weekend.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
To go back to the arts theme for a moment, this weekend, we had the Montanari Arts Festival over in Little Italy. Y'all should come check it out. There are beautiful street paintings from all over the world. Folks from Belize, Mexico, came here to Baltimore to celebrate our culture and paint these really, really, really cool murals all over the street on High Street. And some young people from the Baltimore School for the Arts won the grand prize in the youth category, so that was neat. Come check it out. It's just enlivening the street, making it wonderful, and just adding the vibrancy of our already incredibly vibrant city.
Thank you. And Councilman Pinkett, I was, will be remiss if I didn't remind the public that since our last council meeting, the council and our folks from the Baltimore County, we were also victorious ourselves over our counterparts from Montgomery and Prince George's County, and we look forward to beating them again in the future, all in the fun and all for the future of Baltimore youth athletics. So thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President, ask for a moment of silence for Vivian Scruggs and the 240 homicide victims in Baltimore City, and the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, September 23 at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers.
There being no further business, this includes the 66th meeting of the 72nd Term of the Baltimore City Council.